So, welcome to the town council meeting in August. Pushed back for weeks so we could have the fire carnival uninterrupted. I don't think any of you would have been here otherwise, so good to see everybody. Meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 23 and livestreamed by carolmediacenter.org and on the Facebook.com Carol Media Center as well. So, let's rise for the prayer and the pledge. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead, who place their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead and for everyone here tonight to be a stabilizing influence in these unsettled times. The Lord bless this meeting and our town. And a moment of silence for Jack Leiborn, County Economic Development Director, who passed away suddenly yesterday. He served the county for a very long period of time and we just should recognize his service. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, roll when you get a chance.
Mayor Nevin?
Here.
Councilwoman Barrett?
Here.
Councilwoman Painter?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Unclesby?
Here.
And Councilman Zolman is absent.
Excused.
Excused.
So, minute approvals from July 11th?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Managers report when you're ready.
Alrighty. So, on the town projects, the request for bids has been released for the town fall paving project. The roads to be paved in this project include Shidow Avenue, South Carroll Street, Mott Avenue, and West Street. The request for bids has also been released for snow plowing. The town is requesting bids to plow Main Street from North Woods Trail to Farmwoods Lane. Both bid openings are scheduled for September 7th and the results will be presented to council at the September 12th meeting for your review and approval. Our commercial and residential projects continue to move forward. We continue to work with several different site plans, construction projects, and business prospects. Since the summer, the review process has slowed down a little bit simply because of vacations. As far as the water system, on June 9th, Brian Icaboni and Joey Orvich took the MDE T3 Water Operator Examination. Both passed with impressive scores. This once again makes everyone in the Public Works Department certified water operators. Congratulations to Brian and Joey.
Here, here.
Cheryl continues to close out fiscal year 2023 in preparation for the upcoming audit. The auditors will be here the week of September the 11th. Also, the annual workers' compensation audit will be performed next week. I attended the WRCC meeting with Kevin on July 26th. Hazen Engineering gave a presentation concerning the implications of PFAS on municipalities. After we viewed this presentation, Kevin and I are both confident that Hampstead is well ahead of the curve in dealing with PFAS and having a plan in place to mitigate and eliminate this emerging contaminant.
More coming in the coming months.
Let's hope not, but I agree with you.
Good things.
Okay. More yes. In collaboration with the Hampstead Main Street Committee, the town has purchased several benches to be placed at various locations along Main Street. These benches are similar to the benches in use at the amphitheater in War Memorial Park. We hope to have them installed by early fall. Mixed-use zoning, that's something that's a hot topic in the planning world, and as the Planning and Zoning Commission have worked their way through the comprehensive plan, it continues to surface, the need for mixed-use planning in the local business district. Mixed-use allows residential and commercial uses within the same principal structure. While this is allowed in the residential business district with certain restrictive conditions, it's not addressed in the local business district. As you're probably aware, there are many properties along Main Street that currently have businesses on the lower floor and apartments above. They're all non-conforming uses. Additionally, many projects that other towns are seeing in the downtown areas are utilizing mixed-use to put apartments on the second floor of commercial space. What this does is encourages more walkability within your downtown districts and helps your businesses out. The Commission will be discussing this, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be discussing this at their September meeting and will hopefully have something for the council to review in the very near future.
Not August?
Excuse me?
Not August.
Well, we are in August, so we're hoping in September.
Okay.
Next week?
Yeah, next month. Yes, there, yes, I see what you're saying. P&amp;Z will review it and talk about it at their August meeting and then we'll hopefully have something to counsel for the September meeting.
There you go.
Thank you. I did have people approve this. Judy attended the MML Summer Symposium discussing cannabis on August 10th to gather information on its legalization in the state of Maryland, how it will affect our community and employment for the town. Judy is getting together a report and once she has that and tells us about how, what the reaction was, what topics were discussed, I will share that with everyone so we know what possibly we could expect coming down the road.
Yeah, I know one of the things is that it's the first time in history that the state usurped local planning authority and said, "This is where they will go."
Yes.
So, stay tuned. Alright, oversight, Diane?
Hey, the farmers market manager and advisory team would like to thank Blue Ocean Copper Mine and the Hampstead Fire Department for all of their collaboration in utilizing the Pantherplex property for both the farmers market and carnival during the same week. This is the third year that we've, we've been sharing the property with the carnival, and the process gets better every year. We will be back at the water tower for the remainder of the season. One of our vendors from previous seasons, Back Nine Woodworks, returned to the market on August 12th after taking a hiatus for traveling. I don't have the specific dates, but they will be selling their handcrafted wooden cutting boards, serving boards, and knives with handcrafted wooden handles for several Saturdays between now and the end of the season, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Wayne?
The Hampstead Train Station Committee had their music in the park this past Saturday. Best Regards was there. We had a pretty good turnout. Band was really good. Hickory Winds coming up in two weeks. That'll be on the...
26.
26. And then Blue Moon Big Bands coming back on September 9th. So, that should be an excellent event. It was last year.
And that wraps the season, right?
That wraps the season, yes. The train station's been working with the Fall, with the Main Street Committee for our Fall Fest this year. It's going to be held on October 7th. So far, we've got a petting zoo. We'll have three different bands playing, different times. We'll have food, hayrides, pumpkin painting, scarecrow stuffing, and right now, we've got 32 vendors already.
Wow, and the garden too, don't forget.
Oh, yeah. We'll have a beer garden, and Luke will be there selling his pretzels.
Pretzels.
So, looking forward to that. Tree Commission, we're working on our fall planting and hopefully we'll have something solid by September meeting.
Okay. Deb?
Okay, so the Planning and Zoning Commission met on Wednesday, July 26th. One of the things that they discussed was the sample houses for Melanie Acres. They came in and brought us some plans that we think will go really well with the existing community and approval of the final site plan for Melanie Acres. There was also...
Gave approval or...
We, it says here on approval of final site plan.
Yes, the planning is...
So, it was the same plan that we had already approved, isn't that correct?
Previous month, we had the public hearing, so this month, basically, it was the approval of the final site plan for Melanie Acres.
Right.
Yes.
I thought it had previously been approved.
No.
That only took four years?
No, longer than that. The, the, the number on the site plan with the county was 2017, so, six years. Not our fault, they took their time.
There was an approval of the subdivision of land for the Hampstead Welcome Sign at North Carroll Business Park, tract one, Hanover Pike. It was about a three-foot area that was given to us. There was discussion of the 2023 Hampstead Growth Area Amendment, which would allow Penguin Random House to annex in for water usage. This was sent to the Carroll County Department of Planning and Maryland Department of Planning, and it, we had discussed before, their usage is very minimal comparable to the size of the building. Carroll County Department of Planning update, the Board of Carroll Commu, Carroll County Commissioners adopted the 2019 Master Water and Sewer Plan, and it was submitted to MDE. And finally, in other business, the Planning and Zoning Commission has discussed doing a walking tour to look at the signage on Main Street, and we still are working on a date for that.
Okay, thanks.
Water?
Oh, that's right, you've got that.
I do. The water usage, July 2023 average water usage was 351,000 gallons per day. August 2023 water usage so far is 353,000 gallons per day. Rainfall for July 2023 was 3.64 inches and so far in August is 2.57 inches.
Thank God we're getting some of it. So, alright, Dave, finally?
Councilman Thomas had talked about the Fall Fest, which we're really excited about. I'm set on the Main Street Committee, and this ties into Chief Sites Park. The new picnic tables and the bike rack have been installed at the park, and we hope that our residents and visitors are enjoying the new amenities at Chief Sites Park. The bike rack was something that we had suggested along with the benches that are going to be done in the fall, so we're happy to at least get the bike rack up now and benches in the fall, so that's great. Sugar Maple Park, I was given a little diagram if everybody wants to take a look at that down that way. The town of Hampstead was awarded a program open space grant, once again, for the installation of the obstacle course and swing area at the park. This will be a welcome addition to the current playground area. The new playground equipment will be installed in the current open grassy field area of the park. Excavation work in preparation for the new playground area will begin at the end of August. The new playground and obstacle course area is anticipated to be installed in September or October of this year, and they said there's more details to come, so.
Good news, thank you. Alright, Chief?
Good evening, everyone. During the month of July, with reference to traffic safety, we investigated four reportable accidents, five minor property damage only. Three caches took place at the 42 Traffic Circle, and the speed signs were placed at five locations for a total of 64 days of display. Traffic enforcement also included 36 selective enforcements over an 18-hour period. During those activities, 25 citations, 24 warnings, and four DUI arrests were made. Overall, traffic enforcement included 115 citations and 150 warnings. We conducted 400 property checks of various schools and businesses. Serious crime included two assaults, both of those incidents were referred to the Commissioner's Office, two trespass incidents, four minor thefts, and three burglaries, one identity theft. Going back to the burglaries for a second, one was directly related to a mental health issue and two were related to prior roommates, so they're not random, they're all by known parties. Arrest included one for fourth, one arrest for fourth-degree burglary, nine serious motor vehicle violations, and five DUIs. 35 hours of training took place, including basic firearm safety, active assailant classroom and active assailant practical exercise. What that's referring to is, if anybody had a chance to read in The Times, there was a practical exercise that took place at one of the schools in the county with county law enforcement. Basically, it was a mock incident and how we respond, how we handle it. The active assailant classroom portion of it, both of our supervisors went to that so they understand what's happening out there, and one of our supervisors attended the actual practical exercise. We also continued with several officers finishing up their lethality assessment program training, and we were able to get Corporal Crantrill through the International Association of Property and Evidence Management School. Basically, he's been certified as an evidence and property management tech, technician to manage our evidence facility that we have here. Community events included Camp Cops. Brian Emery spent a week over at the Ag Center with Carroll County Law Enforcement as well as State's Attorney's Office, where they run a, a camp for the kids. It's a great program. This is the second year, I think, we've participated in, and it's always a great, a great time. We attended the Roberts Field HOA. We also participated in the Celebri Truck Parade. I was fortunate enough to attend the Boys and Girls Club Luncheon. They have plans to be open by October 1st in, over at the Pantherplex. A lot of their explanation of what they do and the programs that they offer is, is really exciting. I think it'll be a, it'll be a good addition to the town. We also have had our Spring Garden PTO ride-along, and what that's referring to is, during the school year, the PTO came to me one night and said, "Hey, can we auction off a ride-along with the police department as part of our fundraiser?" So, I said, "Hey, why not? Let's give it a shot." Young man Jake and his grandmom, who won the auction, they came and spent a day with us. We got him over to the fire department, we got him out to the 911 center. I think they had a good time. It was, it was fun for all of us. With reference to personnel, Sam Reese has left the police department. She is now with the Frederick County Sheriff's Office.
Frederick or Washington?
Frederick County. We wish her luck, continued success, and we'll miss her, and I hope it, it works out for her. Last thing, I don't have a list on it here, but some, some notes, technically, this will go in next month's report, but the National Night Out was a, it was a great night. First of all, the weather was perfect. It was a success, but we can't do it without, without the help of so many people. Everybody's sitting up here tonight, so everybody's aware of it. The council, the mayor, the town staff, all came out and were tremendous help, and it's, it's greatly appreciated, you know, by all of us. Public Works, guys did a lot of hard work putting things out for us, appreciate that. Thanks to the fire department, the Lions Club, St. John's for, for giving us access to the building and the parking lots. Some of the businesses, Walmart, Wice, J&amp;P, Greens Garage, Hoffman's, Rita's, I'm sure I missed somebody. If I did, I apologize. And just a, an additional sort of attaboy for our Squad One, Corporal Vanik, Wilton Emery, they were the guys that did the majority of the legwork on this. They put a lot of, of time and effort into it, and I think it was a success. We had a great night. And that would be my report.
Questions from Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
My comments, I'll start with National Night Out. Everybody did a great job organizing that. It's great to see everybody who came out to that event, was very, very, very well attended, so just kudos to everybody involved. It was, and I was standing there when a man came up to Officer Wilt and thanked him for saving his wife's life. Yeah, so, you know, I won't go into the situation, but it turned, you know, turned the negative into a positive, other than just saving her life. So, you know, it's, and it's good to see the people just interacting with everybody wearing a blue uniform, so it doesn't happen in every place, and so that's one of the places, one of the things that makes Hampstead special. There's a, there's been a article that came out, I think I'll, if I haven't forwarded it to you all, I will, but there's a lawyer in Baltimore City who serves on the Climate Solutions Committee for the state of Maryland, and Maryland in, this is 2023, in 2021 passed a pathway to zero emissions law. It's not a guideline, but they, they've said, "We gotta cut our, we gotta cut fossil fuel usage in Maryland by 60% by 2031 and off, totally off the grid by 2045." And so, this lawyer, basically, he's very good with all these environmental issues, laid it all out very starkly, what has to happen for Maryland to meet those guidelines. So, if anybody wants a copy of this, we'll gladly email it to you. Just send an email to the town and, and we'll send it out. It's six pages, summarizes it pretty well, that there's, they're very ambitious goals, and there's a lot of things that are going to impact Marylanders in their everyday life if this, we continue down this path. The other thing that's going on is the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee, which I'm on, is we had 20 legislative action requests from various towns that were submitted. We narrowed it down to about four. Mako, the Maryland Association of Counties, is in Ocean City this week, so MML hasn't picked their four yet, or three, or two, whatever the number's going to be, but our staff is, from MML, is down in Ocean City with Mako, and so during this time, there'll be some socializing of where they can work together and where we disagree, how we can make those disagreements a little less disagreeable and maybe find a way, a common path forward. So, we'll see how that plays out, but we'll have that, we'll have those initiatives lined up by the end of Septa, by the end of August, because September, October, November, you gotta work on them, and then January's here and the legislature's in session, so it's a never-ending process. That's my report. There is no unfinished business. Under new business, we have the discussion and approval of the installation of a no parking sign on Sycamore Drive at Red Oak Court. Comments?
Basically, the way it works is we were made aware of a line of sight issue for vehicles attempting to exit Red Oak Court. The parking there, it is, you can park almost to the edge of the intersection, so as you're coming out and looking left, there could be a vehicle sitting there totally blocking your line of sight for anyone approaching from the south. This happens from, very occasionally, we've come, run into this. What we like to do at that point is ask for your permission to move it back one parking space, which is 20 feet, which opens up a tremendous difference in the line of sight. If you look at the overhead view, you can see where there's a red line and then a line around the curb. Basically, that is where the no parking sign is as you would enter the court specifying no parking in that area that's marked in red. That's all painted yellow on the curb. What we're asking to do is basically move that no parking sign, extend it back to where the other red mark is, and paint that curb, basically allowing for 20 additional feet of no parking, so to open up that sight line. And if you look at the other two photos, those are examples of how, what a difference that would make in, that just that 20 feet.
Is there parking on both sides of Sycamore allowed?
There is not. If you are heading north on Sycamore, there's no parking.
Okay, so basically, the ones that are parking there would be from the houses across the street?
They could be from houses on either side.
Yeah.
They got parking behind too.
No, yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Do you think that if, if that's blocked there, they're going to start parking right to that other?
Yeah, the other side.
Here? Yeah. Well, that doesn't create, that doesn't create as much of an issue, and Chief, you can chime in at any time on this, because as you're exiting the court, you have more sight distance to allow you to come out and stay in your lane, heading south. So, we, we don't plan to make any addition, any adjustments on the south side of the exit from Red Oak Court.
Yeah, and I, I went up and viewed the, that part of the road, and on the opposite end, there's a lot more room for, there was a lot more space that was no parking.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with this. I make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. I don't think there is any other new business? Public comments? There's a few of you here for August. Yes, sir, if you state your name and address, that'd be great.
Craig Miller, 4006 Shidow Avenue. I've been here in this little town since 2000, I married my wife. We don't feel safe here anymore because July the 10th, my dog and I were walking to 10,002 West Ave. A pit bull, brown pit bull, unprovoked blast, no leash, no collar attacked us. I was bitten three times. My dog has nine puncture wounds. One just now healed up. Now, the people who said they lived there in 10,002, you know, all got done. My dog and I were there. We didn't feel safe enough to even stay there. We walked down to the police station, and I was bleeding, she was bleeding, and we were at the police station. So, we walked home. We called the EMTs and the police, they were there immediately. They did a great and wonderful job. Well, then the next day, on the 11th, the gentleman who owned the dog, he said, came down and said, you know, "Please don't do anything. I'll take care of all the cloth." But please don't do anything. Well, it turns out, he tells me that he is a person who does not have a place to live, that he's sleeping in the alley in his car. So then, when I talked to some of my neighbors here, they said they had issues with the dog too. I called animal control, they said there was no record of any issues with the dog before. I talked to the Carroll County Health Department, no issue. Officer Wilt, I talked to Officer Wilt, he said they were aware that the dog had some problems. Well, the one, the one animal, the woman said yes and the woman said no. When I came here, I talked to a young lady in the front, and she goes, "We don't keep dog records." I said, "Well, wait a minute. We pay to have our dog pet. We pay to let you guys have our records." I said, "All's that one knows is that dog has shots in. We have no idea we don't keep those records." So, now talking to other neighbors, there's been other incidents with the same dog, same people, and some of my questions relate, what constitutes a vicious dog? What do we do? Because the police station was not occupied at that moment, I did not have my cell phone on. And, but like I said, when the police came, it was two gentlemen, then Officer Wilt, and the EMTs, they did a wonderful job.
Good. The police station, most evenings is not manned. That's, you know, so 911's the way to go, which is, I'm glad to hear the response that you got. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the other stuff, but we'll look into it. Anything to add?
I know there's been multiple reports on that dog, and they, with the Humane Society, you've been in contact with them multiple times. Can I tell you that that particular address, and, and what you're talking about, he does not sleep in his car, sleeps in a, 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 a home that they, that...
Okay, he told you something?
Yeah, he does not. I can tell you that there have been multiple processes that have started to discover this in that house, but it is also a procedure that people are able to apply to, essentially the authorization that we're making, and that process is, is, is in the works. It's not a quick process because people are able to heal and defend themselves, but actions have been taken against that particular instance.
And it still doesn't answer my question about what constitutes a vicious dog in this town? How come it didn't have a collar or leash? And if it's known and has other incidents, who will we go to? Because when I came here, they said we don't keep any records.
We don't, and as far as coming here and paying for the dog licenses and everything, basically, all we are is a collection point for the, for the Humane Society. They come in and they'll pick up the slips, the dog registration that you fill out. We just collect the information on the data, I mean, like on the rabies, we pass everything on to the Humane Society. So, it's just like, you know, we're a collection point for them.
So, when you don't feel safe, who will we go to? Because it's multiple, isn't it? And again, I was...
You, you've done the right thing. You, you called 911 that day and we're addressing it. It'll, it'll take time, but we are addressing it. And then, you can also, during the day, if you, you know, if you're not getting the response, you need to have a police department, which I doubt, you can also call Town Hall.
And I was there when, when you came in here. I was right around the corner and I heard Christine, like, she came into my office and mentioned it, at which point, within 10 minutes, I talked to Chief Snyder, and we, we found out it was the same dog that had the previous reports on, at which point, that's when Chief Snyder talked to the Humane Society.
And, you know, when your particular incident was documented, we supported you, we provided photographs, videos, everything we had. So, when I called them, the animal control, they said everything from the dog, I knew prior to it, she, the dog was wonderful when the one lady went there and visited, to the other lady saying the dog did have incidents, to the guy at the Maryland, Carroll County Public Health, he said, "Craig, I went to the house, didn't get out of my car, made sure it didn't go over the parking, and I got out of there." This is the exact word. So, not feeling safe here, you should, you don't feel safe here.
Absolutely, and I think we're, we're dealing with it as expeditiously as we can, given what the chief has, has said, without telling, I mean, I think, like you said, those people have the right to appeal, right? So, it sounds like we're bringing the action that we need to. I wish it could happen overnight, but it takes time, but I think we're on the right path, and I appreciate you coming and enlightening us.
Okay, so, so what are the fines or whatever if the dog doesn't have a collar or leash? And it's bought, I mean, off of its property into another property?
That's all, that's handled by the Humane Society, and they're processing their fines and all. It's, it's not enforced by police officers. The authorities go in for the... So to answer your question, I just don't know.
So you complain to them that we don't seem, we've never here, if anything happens to our dog.
Well, you're doing it. So when you came in and talked to Christina, and Jim talked to it, and the chief is aware of it, sometimes it helps when the town calls animal control as opposed to just a citizen.
Chief, straight me out here. Animal Control and the, the animal, or the Humane Society aren't the same, are they?
They run out of the same office. It's actually, essentially where they are.
So, so the town of Hampstead is under the county's animal control law. And so it's the, it's the county that has the lease law that says they have to be on a leash, and you have to clean up behind them and all that. So it's up to the, up to the animal control to take the report and do the process work, go out and visit the dog and everything. I'm surprised that they didn't quarantine the dog to make sure that it didn't have rabies.
They did for 10 days at that apartment, and I had to wait to find out. And then nobody called me. I had to call Maryland Public Health, the Carroll County Public Health people to get the answer that the dog was okay, and I was about to get shots, and they were with my dog.
Yep. I've, I've been through the rabies vaccine, shots. Not something you want to do. I'm glad it, glad it didn't have rabies, but it's up to animal control to take care of this. I know we had another incident at, at the mill down here, where a lady's dog had gone and attacked a woman and hurt two dogs. And it took a while, but they did come in and get the dog, and it was destroyed.
So, so again, can we follow up with animal control?
You follow up with animal control, and if you don't get the answer that you want, call, talk to, talk to Christina and Jim. Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just want to tell my story, which you just brought up, actually.
Just give me your, your name.
My name's Kimberly, 1030 South Main Street. It's the same dog. So just, I'll try to keep this short as I can. So on January 4th at 6:30 a.m., my two dogs and I were chased by the same pit bull. In town, off-leash, till a man jumped out of his car to help me and got the dog back to his home. I called the police and animal control the next day. They were wonderful, as always. January 5th, my dogs and I were walking off Gil Avenue, when the dogs and I were severely mauled by a 130-pound bull mastiff mix that was chained up on a porch at the silos while the negligent owner was at work at the chicken market. The dog got off-leash and charged myself and my 10-year-old dogs, who are 57 and 43-pound boxers. The dog clamped onto my arm and drug me down the alley. As you can see, I have 26 stitches. My arm is mauled. Until a man rescued me. At that point, it began to attack my dogs. We managed to get the dogs apart, but the damage was already done. I had to get 26 stitches in my arm. I have no feeling in the part of my arm. It makes me physically ill, a little bit, every day. My dog Sammy suffered six punctures on their neck. My dog Romeo suffered 16, four that were so deep from the mastiff's teeth that he had drains put in. The inconsolable and thoughtless dog owner never apologized. She never offered to help with the thousands of dollars in medical and vet bills I have. The landlord allowed her to live there with a vicious dog with no runner's insurance. So who suffers? Me and my dogs. I just wanted to tell my story, because my life has completely changed, and they all know. I used to walk by their house at least three times a day. I no longer walk my dogs. I no longer volunteer to dog rescue. When, I'm completely in fear of dogs now. When I go outside of my house, I have a stick, I have mace, and I have a taser at all times when I walk my dogs. I've tried, since January 5th, eight times to walk my dogs. I have it on my calendar. I try at Leister Park, and I think spent four times out of eight at Leister Park. I have left crying, because people don't have their dogs on leashes. It's just the negligence of so many people in town. Every time I go on Facebook, there's a new dog that's missing. There's a new dog that's loose. The woman in question, which you know, she did have to put her dog down. She literally lives from here to the end of the street, and she has never said I'm sorry. I'm in a financial debt with bills. My dogs are not the same. I take them to work with me every day. I don't walk anymore. And it's sad, because even all the police officers know me in town, because I would walk all the time. Lieutenant Stacy was wonderful through the whole thing. This dog in question here, that they were talking about, she had walked by my house one day, and she had her wonderful dog. And I said to her, I said, "I'm just warning you. I said, 'There's a pit bull down the street, and there's a dog over here that just attacked my dog.'" And then she gets bit, and that just breaks my heart. And I'm in fear, just like this gentleman is. I hate my arm. My dogs are not the same. I'm still paying vet bills. And I understand his, his problem of, it's scary. It's very scary in town. It's, it's very scary. Leister Park, I'm constantly yelling at people, "Put your dog on a leash." And I just, I just wanted to share my story. I'm glad that you already knew about it. I actually touched my heart that actually somebody paid attention. I will say that the Hampstead Police were wonderful. Officer Viz was wonderful, Lieutenant Stacy wonderful. The ambulance workers, when they came, everybody was just wonderful. I do love everybody in town. It's just, it's heartbreaking, you know, because it has changed our lives. I mean, I know I'll never see you walk your dog again. You'll never see me walk my dogs again. So I just wanted to share, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sorry to hear that story.
For the record, I owned that property up until the beginning of December, December 2nd.
Yes.
All my tenants were required to have insurance.
Yeah, I do, I did hear that you owned it at one time. Somebody else owns it now.
Yeah, and the people I sold it to, they took it over. I also know that that woman no longer lives there.
Oh, she doesn't?
No, she hasn't lived there, and I think.
Her dog was just missing in town for three nights. I do remember that. She had a copper scandal, but she adopted. Two days later, it was missing in town for three nights.
Yeah, so.
Is that something you can, as a landlord, you require them, if they had a pet, to have pet insurance? Or?
Well, liability insurance. Liability insurance would cover, you know, your pet being abusive.
Runner's insurance.
All right.
Basically, runner's insurance.
Can we add that to our newsletter, like reminder, keep your dog on leashes kind of thing?
Mm-hmm.
At least to get it out.
I wish we could legislate common sense, but we can't, right? You're, you're dependent on people doing the right thing all the time, right? So, and all's we can deal with it is when we see an issue and it's reported, we deal with it, and we'll do that in this case as well. And I'm, you know, sorry you guys had to come here and share those stories.
I will say, I walk in Panther Park, and I've never seen a dog off-leash. So I'm just saying, I walk my dogs there all the time, and I have not seen one off-leash there.
We walked there just two nights ago, and it was one.
And also, Leister Park is not in town limits. That's the county Parks and Rec. So if you have concerns about dogs being loose at Leister Park, then contact County Parks and Rec for that.
All right. Sounds like we got some work to do. Any other public comments?
Just wanted to talk about the carnival real quick, because of the storms. I wanted to thank you, Kevin, and your crew for everything that you all do every year, but especially this year. I know after the storms passed on Monday, I drove down there and just to see the devastation, the tents down, the barriers down. You know, it was amazing that it opened the next day. And I don't know who was there helping, but I'm sure it was Fire Department, Public Works, and tons of other people, but it was a very successful event. And, you know, I know as a, not as a council member, but as a resident, thank you. And Chief, your staff was very well seen throughout the week, so it was, it was a good time, and it seemed that everybody enjoyed themselves.
It was a large contingent of folks that went over there. We were out handling town concerns, but we all sort of ended up over there eventually. The fire company threw hamburgers and hot dogs on the grill, because most of the restaurants had stopped taking orders. So it was, was a, you know, a place then that everybody could get together and go about the business of getting the carnival back open. One thing I wanted to share with you all, I'm so proud of Toby. I was on vacation for the carnival, but he had the foresight to make sure the terrors were full early in the day because of the anticipated weather that night. When, when we lost power, we had two pump houses that were functional on BG&E. We didn't have to deploy the generators, because he had the terrors full already. We had to deploy generators at one of the water terrors that are shot. We had very limited communications. Cell phones weren't working properly. The SCADA system was down. And Toby slept in shop and manned everything there overnight. And I'm very proud of the department. They, they got out there, got the roads open quick, got the stop signs deployed at the intersections. The police department was on a heroic task, and I just told the chief, "We got it here." So everybody pitched in. The fire company, I think, ran 13 calls for service in three hours, I believe, during that event. At the same time, there were a lot of volunteers out there getting the carnival grounds ready to go for the next day. So it was a big effort, and the carnival was successful. I'd like to personally thank all of you that helped at the candy wheel. If it wasn't for you all and my colleagues that I work with, Stacy and I couldn't do it anymore. And I greatly appreciate your efforts. So thank you so much.
It's our pleasure, and we've now turned it into a competition, so. Just saying.
Competition is who raises the most money on a given night. So, well, thank you. That's a positive note on our town. A lot of people coming together to get things done, which is always heartwarming and just, again, one of the reasons that Hampstead's such a special place to live. So no more public comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.